Pledge? In about thirty seconds. All right. That's, that's, that's a... Yes, I'm asking you to say the pledge. No, no, not yet, not yet, no.
But again. I get them off of the tailgate. You know, turn around and then carry them. I used to, I used to carry them up the stairs.
Okay. Mr. Conas, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business is to call a public hearing to order regarding local law for seniors and people with disabilities, as well as local law for the Adirondack Outreach Center Food Pantry. So, the public hearing is now open. Any questions or commentary? Yes, ma'am?
One question. Um, if you have some questions, just know approximately how many seniors, um, this will affect. I mean, in a good way, possibly, I mean, it's a control.
I, I, off the top, I, I think, Arnold, do you have those? Okay, because I think at one point Arthur had a pretty good handle on it, but, okay. And unfortunately, Jiminy.
Yeah, the, the very, I think it's the very last page, last couple pages of the assessment rule. All the different exemptions are listed with the number of homes that take it. I know that for enhanced star, and don't quote me on the numbers. I think in the advanced star, there was, let's say there were X, there were half of X taking the senior exemption. So, you know, the hope was that we could bump that number up and, and help those folks out.
And I know that, I understand that it does not make a significant difference in the overall, it's all back. They're all doing now, they're not.
Think, I, I, I think that, don't quote me on this, but I believe that Arthur said that it makes a point zero four percent.
It's negligible, negligible.
So, it was negligible difference, yeah.
Yep. As far as can you do, do both, are you asking if you can do both? I don't believe, I do not believe that that is the case. Yeah, correct. Any other questions? Okay. I think what we'll do then is, yes.
One thing, just for clarity for some of the folks, is there a reason for passing a local law for the contributor, for the town's contribution to A C O C? Or is that too involved?
No, it's not that it's said involved, but Jim brought up a good point. We now have a local law, but now what we need to do is put in place a contract with, with, with the, with the food pantry. So, local laws in place, now we have to actually put, I believe there was a local law already in place for the Historical Society, and Sterling Goodspeed being the chair, he actually wrote the contract between the Historical Society and the town. So, we will probably go down that road with the food pantry as well. Anyone else? Okay. I'm gonna close the, the public hearing. Uh, gonna call, um, regular town board meeting, uh, December second, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty-five P M. I need, uh, wait a second, we're... Yeah, I know, okay, well, we're not gonna do the minutes now, we're gonna, okay.
Either way, it doesn't matter. I said, since we had the, the public hearing.
Okay. I'm used to going right to the minute. Yeah, you had me a little confused, okay, so. Resolution to approve, approve local law one of two thousand twenty-five, seniors with disability. I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
So moved, second.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Next, uh, resolution to approve local law two of two thousand twenty-five for the Adirondack Community Outreach Center for the Food Pantry. I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
Motion, second.
Okay, questions or discussion?
Just that the local law authorizes the town to rent, enter into a written agreement, a, and it can be a simple written agreement or an M O U with the Adirondack Outreach. So, nothing complex, um, that would be the next step.
Yep, correct. Anything else? Seeing none, call for, we're on number five, just so you know. The Outreach Center Resolution. Uh, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye? Okay. Six is the, uh, except the meeting minutes of two thousand eighteen and two, uh, excuse me, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and November twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion around this? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye? Okay. Next is resolution to appoint, uh, library board of trustee, trustees. Appointing trustees for the Town of Johnsburg Library Board, Town Johnsburg Library Board. Bylaws allow up to eleven trustees, uh, but the board currently only has five members, whereas Town of Johnsburg Town Board advertised for vacant, for vacant positions on the library board and received letters of interest from six qualified candidates, which were viewed and approved by Town Personnel Committee. Whereas the Town of Johnsburg Town Board wishes to not have, all six incoming trustees share the same term length. Therefore, be resolved, Town of, uh, Town of Johnsburg Board hereby appoints the following candidates as Town of Johnsburg Library Trustees. Emily Goodspeed, Michael Omealy, Carrie Pimi, sorry, Emily Stanton, Ken Wien, and Michelle San Antonio. Need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or conversation?
Again, just to clarify, the first three names that you read, they were chosen and served three years.
Yes.
The last three names were chosen and served two years.
Correct.
That way, there's not everybody.
Correct. Do you, do you have it? I'm sorry, Mindy.
They, they do, um, they all.
Their office of office, yeah, I have all of their office of office, then it will get these done as well.
But if I remember right, at least one of them, you're gonna end up having at least a few that are probably one, two, three. And that was always the intent, it meant, meant to be a three-year term. And if I was allowed with two consecutive terms, with six years total before you have to date at least a year off.
We retroactively appointed those when it came to our knowledge that they hadn't been appointed by the board.
Yep. Do we have a first and a second, or no?
We do.
We do, okay, thank you, sorry. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Next. Resolution to authorize Matt Parabek to sign change orders for the sewer project. This really is kind of just a stopgap, just in case. Matt's been involved with the sewers from the inception of the Sewer Committee, and this just, you know, heaven forbid something were to happen between now and the first of the year, we have somebody that can actually sign a change order, and that's all you'd be doing, and you speak the engineer language, so. Any?
Yes, so you and Jim can still do the change orders.
Correct.
So, my question is, if you two are signing change orders between now and the thirty-first, what's the need for the third person? That's the part that I'm not clear on.
If by chance, Mark is unable, I'm the only person that can actually designate, if by chance, Mark is unable to take the oath on the first, and I'm not here, we have no one who can sign change orders.
Okay, so do we need to put a date on this for any reason?
I don't think so, because at that, I don't see a reason for a date.
I mean, I can certainly add, and, and I don't know when it would be.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, that's my...
But here's the thing, I mean, he's not, all he's doing is...
If Mark takes over, he can appoint someone else if he so chooses.
Correct, yes.
But should something happen in between now and then, God forbid, take either one of these guys, we need to have somebody to keep this whole process going.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the sewer continues to run, or that the project continues moving forward. Yeah, then, then it's, right. Right, correct, yep. It is a stopgap measure on the outside chance, that's all.
So, the supervisor is the one that's authorized to sign change orders, to sign checks, um, to sign contracts. The supervisor is the only one that can delegate that authority to other individuals. So, uh, if Mark were unable to take office, there is no supervisor to designate to have someone sign change orders. The other step that I, that I'm pretty sure is happening is that Kevin, uh, is going to put Anna and Paul both on the signing of checks, so.
Paul's, Paul's already, has already been on that since, for a while, so I have already, I went ahead and did that last week.
So, so all it is, is, is a step, uh...
To ensure that just a continuation.
There is a continuation.
Continuation of town government, that's it.
There, there is just, and I'm putting this out there, there has been some question about if this needs to be notified to the New York State Comptroller's Office. I think we might need to check that, because if there is a designation of someone...
But it's just a change order, he's not, he's not doing any...
It's just a committee member?
Just a committee member, okay, because some of, some of, some of that lang, some of that language is just, and I'm, and these questions are to clarify that we're doing the right thing, yeah.
The confusion was if he was already sworn in as a board member, he doesn't need to be a board member to be on a committee. So, on the committee, none of that information goes to the state comptroller. It's all appointed by the supervisor.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so let's move this. If, if there needs to be clarification at a later date, we can have clarification at a later date. But right now, let's take the...
Resolution, so, resolution, um, to authorize Matt Parabek, I need a motion to bring it to the floor.
You have it, second.
Okay, yep, we're good.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. The FEMA, the ongoing, I guess this goes back quite some ways.
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. But Danae basically has brought it to us, uh, the resolution to move money from reserve to pay FEMA back. Town was paid by FEMA for Claude Straight Bridge, sixty thousand dollars, three hundred fifty-three to, sixty thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars. The cost replaced the bridge, Claude Straight, was determined to be several thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, all property owners have access to properties. It was determined that the bridge would not be replaced. Uh, the funds given to the town were placed in reserve in anticipation that they would need to be repaid to FEMA. Now, therefore be resolved, the Town of Johnsburg Town Board authorized transfer of sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents to repay FEMA. Motion to bring this to the floor, please.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Set, okay, so number ten, resolution to set salaries for twenty twenty-six per the budget. Twenty twenty-six, um, adopted, uh, budget was adopted November eighteenth. The salary schedule for Highway Department employee was set within the current Highway Association contract. Salaries for all other departments were set within the budget process. Therefore, be it resolved, Town of Johnsburg Board authorized establishment of salaries as listed per adopted twenty twenty-six budget to take effect January one, two thousand twenty-six. Need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye? Okay. Resolution to make end of the year budget line transfers. The year cannot be closed with negative expenditure lines. Uh, end of year budget line transfer may be necessary to close the year. Uh, list of any transfers made will be submitted to the Town Board upon closing of the year. Uh, be it, now be it resolved, it's Town of Johnsburg Board authorizes bookkeeper to make end of year budget line transfers as needed to close out the year two thousand twenty-five. Need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye? Next, resolution for purchase of a J Pro system for the Highway Department. So, in there is a packet. Highway Department is looking for ways to save money with repairs to fleet and research several systems. The procurement policy was followed with the three quotes. The J Pro diagnostic system is, uh, is purchased, the Highway Department would like to make. Uh, it is least expensive with the most value for what is needed. Uh, the cost of the system is eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, would come out of budget line, DA five-one-three-oh-point-two. Therefore, be it resolved, Town of Johnsburg Board authorizes the purchase of J Pro system. I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
So moved.
All right, discussion and questions?
I spoke with George about it, he pretty much sold me on the idea. He explained fairly clearly how much we're paying every time we have to have something plugged in for our equipment. This would save that, and the other thing is the immediacy of it, we aren't gonna have to wait for somebody to come in and plug in. This is something I think, from mechanic point of view, is a very good idea. Um, it will save us money in the long run, and it will keep our equipment, or get it back on the road sooner, too. This is a good purchase.
Jeff?
How many times a year do we use people, but not just that, nine years after? Uh, I have been seeing... Every time you come in, it's hard to... What's that? The pressure? Fifteen? That's a nine... Fifteen weeks, so, that's an awful, still using, you know, your... Your each part of your, uh, your... I'm going off the stretch. I mean, you're still complaining that we can't do all of it, so we're... This will help us if we're able to do a lot more than we like.
Jeff, um, their mechanic there, George, was telling me that, that he figured it out right now at the rate it would be, it'd be less than three years before it paid for itself. He says the average bill for when they call in is around eight hundred bucks. He says that's the bottom end of it, he said. What he said it would be, three years paid off at the rate we're going right now. And, um, I can't see, with equipment becoming more and more sophisticated to work on, this, I think it would pay itself off sooner than that.
Every time I read the vouchers, and I will be getting a life here in a very short amount of time and not be reading vouchers anymore, um, there's always a Crane Mountain Mechanical. There's vouchers that we're about to approve, uh, there's one Crane Mountain Mechanical, troubleshoot and repair for a thousand dollars. So, uh, the ability to diagnose that in-house and fix it is, is gonna pay itself back. Al- almost every voucher that I've looked at over the last two years, um, every month has a Crane Mountain Mechanical, so. I am, I can't answer that, I know what comes across the vouchers, yeah.
This, this also has, as Fred said, the ability far further than regular diagnostics. It gives you a lot of, um, information as far as repair information, going back to as far as circuits, wiring, hydraulic circuits, and so on. It's a much, much deeper than just a piece of diagnostic equipment to plug in. Yeah, that's another thing.
Who is Fred?
The school.
Oh, okay. Do we have motion one and two?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Any other conversations or questions? I mean, it just seems like a lot of money, but again, I'm, I've, I mean, I also understand where Jim's coming from. It's a grand, and, and I don't know how many times we end up, I'd have to go back and look, but as much as I'm, and this is, this is the best, the best deal that... Okay.
This will do every engine up there coming back to be truly...
Okay. All right. Any other conversations around this? All right, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Let's see here. Where are we? I don't see my rescind.
Yeah, the title on it doesn't say rescind.
Okay, okay, because that's what I'm looking for, okay, all right, so.
The one underneath is what we're rescinding to, the one with the names on it.
Okay, all right. Resolution, that's number thirteen, resolution rescind, resolution two seventy-five twenty-five to add names of individuals hired. Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right. So, on here is the list of people, Dan Proudie and Daniel Phillips. Pay rate of twenty-one, uh, twenty-one fifty, and then twenty-two thirty-six. Bless you. Daniel Phillips to be hired for sixteen-week position, start date December first, two thousand twenty-five.
So, just to clarify, if I could interrupt, I was...
Yeah, sure.
It was approved back in the November eighteen for the rates, it just didn't have the individual's name.
Yep.
Which Danae, per the state comptroller's office, needs that information, so that's why we're doing that.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any other convers...
Can we just put our time, so, you know, how we had gotten Colin? And that's a fifteen-week, but will be the, we need this to inform him that for one, how we're going to, so, if I have a... So, when we send down, send down forty-six forms, they want us to give them a start date, we need your temporary, so if anything is started, will, will they have, how we've got a team, we can get, so that we can make that one.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 I just wanna be sure, because...
So, do you want me to change the date or the time on the resolution to say Danae, seventeen weeks?
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that amendment?
Yep.
All right.
Got it.
Sorry, guys, but did we bring this to the floor already?
Yes.
Okay, good enough, dear Lord. Okay, any other discussion around this resolution? Fire him again. Yep. Fire him again. All right. Seeing no other questions or discussion, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Resolution to rehire on-call individual. Highway Department's request for resolution to approve the rehiring of one call-in individual, December first, two thousand twenty-five. Dave Stout is rehired to fill the call-in position with the start date of December first, two thousand twenty-five. Retroactive, he gets called in prior to December first, two thousand twenty-five. Therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Johnsburg Board authorizes the hiring of one call individual for December first, two thousand twenty-five. Need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
Move. Second.
And again, this was part of the two seventy-five twenty-five resolution. Danae had just asked because of the difference in the timing for the people that have been separated into just two resolutions.
Okay.
I think that was a lot to do with retirement, too.
They, retirement, the part of the office, that stuff, but so, the civil service, and they've had a lot of issues down there, because they're really behind keeping things. It, it, it's not just things that weren't supposed to be happening before, but it will be a big one next year, our civil service, to be saying, like, right to what Eric Sanders wants, so like, it's about, it's, it's, we're not getting, trying to bring it all together, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussions around this? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Next up is warrants. Need a motion to bring warrants to the floor, please? Motion.
Second.
Do we have any questions or concerns about the warrants? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye? Okay, committee reports. Mr. Hyde?
We did not have a committee meeting for the solid waste, but I believe Pete has got some information update for us on the, on where we stand at this point.
Yeah, we're approaching the end of the year, uh, revenue has been strong, uh, all year long. We've, uh, hit our projected revenue number for the year, we're a little bit less than double here, so that's positive. We've got a couple of small, uh, maintenance projects to try to wrap up before the end of the year. One would be to address the railing, uh, around the top of the C D, which took some more damage last week, but fortunately, the cable got caught when, uh, one of the, uh, containers got packed and had to be pumped. It was actually, the Highway Department insisted with that, I wasn't good. All in all, this year has been really positive, I think, and I'm working on an end-of-the-year report. I hope by the beginning of the sixteenth to have all of my departmental reports to you guys to review. But yeah, solid waste, very positive, I think all the changes that have been made. The feedback started beginning of the year, little drumming, lots of questions, that faded by, you know, midsummer, and actually starting to get some, some positive feedback from folks that were on the other side of the fence earlier in the year. So, anyway, I think it's going well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shale Care Committee?
Going to hammer out and get final dates of completion on the plant. Hopefully Keller will also be able to give us final dates on collection and conveyance. Collection and conveyance, we're still working around the issue down at Red Road Place. The engineering will work to move the pump station away from the contaminated area. We got to 10 and a half feet of groundwater before we hit groundwater and the groundwater is contaminated, but it's better than six foot still having to go down and have that whole pile, everything be filled with water and then need to be put into a frac tank and hauled away. So anyways, the engineering is feasible. It's going to work. What we'll end up doing then as opposed to open trenching across that parking lot, we will do a horizontal bore and that will cut down on remediation that's needed there. At the plant, you'll see behind Town Hall, the big crane has arrived. So the, all the big tanks are in, all the holding tanks, septic and then step tanks, that's all that infrastructure is in the ground. Now they'll be burying those concrete boxes that you see, putting in the processing guts into that. There's 10 of them down there. That represents half of the capacity of the plant. There's future development that could occur that would double that size. So that's all progressing. We'll get a final dates for completion, hopefully at this meeting on Friday.
Just a couple of notes on town events slash youth committee stuff. Saturday before Thanksgiving, we had our annual ski swap, the youth race swap at the school. Lot of skis and boots and winter gear given out in exchange. Actually donated to the Ropsit here, a $400 donation, which is great, helps to keep supporting all the programs that the youth committee is trying to offer. Just a reminder, coming up this weekend, it's, I know technically some of the lights on the fence stuff started this past weekend, but this is a big weekend for the town. We have our Christmas tree lighting ceremony here at Tarry Pond, 5:30 PM on the side lawn. Please join us for that. We're going to have singers from the school. We're going to have the dancing reindeers. We're going to have, actually this year, we're going to be doing a lighted wagon ride from here down Main Street to Riverfront Park. The lights there, back and forth. It's going to be cool to bundle up. But that's all 5:30 Friday night. There'll be refreshments. Santa will be here to meet the kids, give away goodies. Saturday, the 6th at noon, we'll be kicking off the lights on parade down Main Street from the North Creek Firehouse to the caboose at Riverfront Park at the train depot. The Christmas caboose is going to be set up again. Mrs. Claus will be down there. The conductor will be down there again, more goodies to give away. That afternoon, Santa Claus will accompany me again over to Elderwood to meet the folks there and mingle over there. And then finally, Sunday, from 9 to noon at the North Creek Firehouse, we'll have our breakfast with Santa. This was taken over this year by the Johnsburg Youth Committee and the Johnsburg Central School Junior Class. In addition to Santa Claus giving away gifts and doing photos, obviously we'll have the breakfast. We're going to have a visit from Olaf to Snowman and there's going to be a holiday cookie decorating station as well. So whether you are two or 200 years old, come, have breakfast, decorate some cookies, meet Santa, meet Olaf, we'll have lots of goodies to give away. Food will be good. So yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whole big weekend here to really get December and the Christmas season kicked off. Hopefully everyone will enjoy it. Everyone will enjoy all the lighting displays that will all be officially lit Friday night.
Thanks, Pete. Sure.
Yeah. So, so originally when we went and permitted, so this is going two years ago now. So when the permit got put in, there was concern whether or not the sewer system would be ready in time to service the lodge. So part of that permit was a Holden Hall permit through the DEC utilizing the 50,000 gallon tank. Subsequently, order was concerned that the big tank wouldn't be ready. So they had asked us to modify our permit to have Holden Hall from the Joe Minder Lodge. So that was successfully done or started, I should say. The town did all the infrastructure work to allow for Holden Hall from the Joe Minder Lodge. That was completed on November 17th and the big tanks were completed the following Monday. So everything is ready for them to open their lodge and discharge waste as soon as they sign the MOU.
So what's the issue with that?
Yeah.
Is the, the difference between the MOU and the state, the reason they wanted to pay the recent name? Do they make it to state?
Yeah, so there's a local.
Yeah, so there's a local law passed in 2007 by the town that requires the, the previous board, you were probably there, had set out guidelines as far as engineering and legal fees as far as development goes. So, you know, those are fees that, all we're doing is following the local law that we have by passing those on. We haven't passed on legal fees. Those, the town has absorbed. But the engineering that was specific to that request of theirs are the engineering fees. Yeah.
That happened. I know that that needs to be a conversation to the audience because that has happened.
I have no idea what their thoughts and plans are.
I, I basically, I sent the local law to Ashley and said, no, we need is the MOU sign. That was it. That was it. That's not a debt.
Your conversation back at 14:00.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yeah.
I was curious about what inbounded bill is for the engineer.
It was $4,000.
Forty-one hundred, I believe, there and abouts.
Just. It's not that much. It's not a break of any.
No, but if, if that money gets put on the rest of the people in the district.
Every other water consumer.
So every other, every other person in the sewer district gets saddled with that debt. That can't be passed on as a town debt. That's a sewer district debt. So the, the, the engineering that was done was specific to this one developer, right? And that developer is responsible for that engineering. If, if that developer doesn't pay that engineering, the rest of the district pay for it. So Cafe Sarah's pays for that engineering. Izzy's pays for that engineering. Marsh's pays for that engineering. Bob Nessel pays for that engineering, right? So all we're doing is saying, these were engineering fees that were for your project. Per our local law, you are responsible for those.
It's, 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 it's down. I don't know. Maybe it's arbitration or something to make it work. I mean, because in town, we rely on more, there's no question. So we got, you're playing sandbox somehow. I just, the whole time on it is over $3,000.
Jeff?
I started with the same issue. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. April 1. I decided for a longer length. I don't see one. I'm sorry. They have to pay those fees. And if you do pay those fees, we're going to set a case.
Well, now was the point of the local law. The local law basically was, was enacted so that, that those, that anybody that develops, I mean, I've been in conversations with, part of conversations for a developer that's looking to put in, you know, town homes and, and he has said that he is willing to pay and do all the excavation work to hook up and become part of the sewer district. Correct. Yes. So, but he's willing to pay those fees. Yep.
That's where I was. So I mean, he just kind of doesn't have an extra of ones that he's concerned that we should think about with the next year about how we manage those. But it's a particular developer, we, it's the first, and most of the time it's either was, we had holdups for the bills sort of after bills and pay them once the developer had paid off. Unfortunately, with the water business issue, I, it was paid out of the water. No idea that order wouldn't pay the bills. Nothing worked. So it's different, it was that developer.
Mr. Stevens?
Seniors Committee cannot say enough about that group of individuals who have done so much. Behind, a, a lot of it has not been highlighted in, in a grand manner, but at our next, at our next town board meeting, I certainly do plan on having a, a full report on what has been accomplished over this past year. We have another meeting tomorrow morning, 10 o'clock here. So get your driveway shoveled out. All people are welcome and we look forward to, to a few other exciting things that are going on. So, and I do want to thank the board for taking the, taking initiative to pass the, pass the senior and veterans exemptions. That was, it was held up for an interminable amount of time and I, I do give, give Supervisor Kevin a lot of credit for reinforcing his views to our attorney who, we, we were, I, I believe that we were woefully, woefully underrepresented in that, in that situation. But we were able to rally, rally forces and make this thing happen. So I want to thank the board personally for doing that and thank you, Kevin, for doing that.
Okay. Next, privilege of the floor.
Pete was telling everybody about all the incredible things happening this weekend. One more is the community choir, North Country Singers will be here Saturday evening at 7 o'clock and on Sunday at 3:00. And folks do need to make advance reservations. There's only a few seats left, I think, on Saturday night and Sunday is getting also pretty full. So if you are sitting out here and don't have a reservation for it, please do that. We are having the jazz band from the school as part of that concert on Saturday evening. So, and I will just ask a question and you can follow up with me after is that we've been trying to get the information out there to folks about where to park because with, you know, 50 people in the, in the choir and another 30 band members and all their parents, et cetera, et cetera. We're just trying to figure that out. So.
Before the weekend, we intend to plow out on the lot behind Robert so that we can continue to do that.
Okay. All right. And it's probably secure enough or frozen enough?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. All right.
We'll fix it if it's not.
Okay.
Honestly, that was the arrangement that's been talked about all year, that we were going to continue to need to use this at least until the plant is finished back here.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else for privilege of the floor? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn?
So moved.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You want the what?